We now call this council meeting to order. Will be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by prayer will be led in the pledge of allegiance. If you have a cellphone, we ask that you would please, at this point in time, put it on silent, mute, or off. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be imminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Here.
Morgan?
Present.
West?
Present.
Jacobs?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. At this time, we open up the microphones for public comment on agenda or action items only. If you would like to have a public comment on these action items or agenda items, please state your name, your address, and your comments. Hearing or seeing none? On the agenda items. Okay, so we'll do it again at the very end.
Did you get an agenda, miss? Okay, they're right, okay. You want me to give her a moment to look at it to see?
Good? Okay, so at the end, when we finish the agenda, we'll come back to public comments. All right? Madam Clerk?
Resolution, now my voice is gonna start cracking. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Damon Wilson to the position of Laborer, Department of Public Works, for forty hours per week with no benefits, effective December 6, 2021, with a thirty-day probationary period at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Derek Cooper to the position of Heavy Equipment Operator, Department of Public Works, for forty hours per week with no benefits, excuse me, effective December 6, 2021, with a thirty-day probationary period at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Further, said appointment is contingent upon successful completion of all of the pre-employment requirements and those documents being provided to human resources within ninety days of this appointment. So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the temporary appointment of Braheem McClary to the position of Laborer, Department of Public Works, for a ninety-day period or until such time as the employee he is replacing on sick leave returns to work, effective November 22, 2021, not to exceed forty hours per week at the rate provided in the annual appropriation ordinance, with no benefits and no accumulation of seniority rights pursuant to the agreement between the City of Chester and Teamsters Local 107.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the temporary appointment of Madeline Kossel to the position of Secretary, Bureau of Health, Department of Public Safety, effective November 22, 2021, to work no more than thirty-seven point five hours per week or until such time as the search process is exhausted with no benefits at the rate provided in the annual appropriation ordinance pursuant to the agreement between the City of Chester and Teamsters.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the temporary appointment of Thelma Evans to the position of Nuisance Inspector, Bureau of Health, Department of Public Safety, effective December 6, 2021, to work no more than thirty-seven point five hours per week or until such time as the search process is exhausted with no benefits at the rate provided in the annual appropriation ordinance pursuant to the agreement between the City of Chester and Teamsters.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Ryan Graff to the position of Apprentice Firefighter, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective November 22, 2021, with all benefits applicable thereto at the salary range as provided for a first-year apprentice in accordance with the contract between the City of Chester and International Association of Firefighters, Local 1400. Further, said individual is required to reside in the City of Chester for the first five years of their employment. Any firefighter not residing in the City of Chester must do so within three months of their date of hire as a permanent employee and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resources Department.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby amend the resolution passed by Chester City Council on November 10, 2021, to read as follows: That it does hereby appoint Nasir Leach to the Chester Economic Development Authority Board to fill the expired term of Christina Delva, term to expire December 31, 2025.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Susie Kirkland to the Chester Housing Authority Board, term to expire December 31, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Abstain.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, the following is the list of the legal holidays for the City of Chester for the year 2022. New Year's Day, Friday, December 31, 2021, which will be observed. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Monday, January 17. President's Day, Monday, February 21. Good Friday, Friday, April 15. Primary Election Day, Tuesday, May 17. Memorial Day, Monday, May 30. Flag Day, Tuesday, June 14. Juneteenth, Monday, June 20, which will be observed. Independence Day, Monday, July 4. Labor Day, Monday, September 5. Indigenous Peoples' Day, Monday, October 10. General Election Day, Tuesday, November 8. Veterans' Day, Friday, November 11. Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 24, and Friday, November 25. And Christmas Day will be observed on Monday, December 26.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the organization of the Chester City Council will be held on Monday, January 3, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., City Council Chambers, 1 Fourth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, 1913, for the purposes of reorganization and appointments to various positions. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise said organization meeting.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the Council of the City of Chester will be holding deliberative-only meetings in City Council Chambers, 1 Fourth Street, 2nd Floor, Chester, Pennsylvania, 1913, at 2:00 p.m. prevailing local time on the following dates for the year 2022. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-19 restrictions and/or state mandates. January 10 and the 24th, February 7 and the 21st, March 7 and the 21st, April the 11th and the 25th, May 9 and the 23rd, June 6 and the 21st, July 11 and the 25th, August 8 and the 22nd, September 12 and the 26th, October the 11th and the 24th, November 7 and the 21st, December 12, 19th and the 27th. Further, that the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester City Council will be held in City Council Chambers, Municipal Building, 1 Fourth Street, 2nd Floor, Chester, PA, 1913, at 10:00 a.m. prevailing time on the following dates for the year 2022, except where designated by an asterisk, which meetings will be held at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-19 restrictions and/or state mandates. January 12 and the 26th, February 9 and the 23rd, March 9 night meeting, 23 would be in the day. April 13 and the 27th, May 11 and the 25th, June 8 is a night meeting, the 22 will be in the day. July 13 and the 27th, August 10 and the 24th, September 14, which is a night meeting, the 28 will be in the day. October 12 and the 26th, November 9 and the 23rd, December 14 is in the night. Day meetings are on the 21st and the 28th. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester Aggregated Pension Board will be held in City Council Chambers, 1 Fourth Street, Chester, PA, 1913, at 2:30 p.m. prevailing local time on the following dates for the year 2022. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-19 restrictions and/or state mandates. January 24, April 25, July 25, October 24. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the public hearing for the 2022 budget shall be held on December 29, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in City Council Chambers, 2nd Floor, 1 Fourth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, 1913. Further, that the final action on the 2022 budget ordinance will be taken at a special meeting of council to be held on December 29, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. in Council Chambers, 2nd Floor, 1 Fourth Street, Chester, PA, 1913. Further, that the city clerk is hereby authorized to advertise a notice of a special meeting and publish a notice of the date, time, and place of the fore-said hearing. Further, that a copy of said proposed budget may be obtained from the city clerk's office at a fee of $10.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby engage the services of UHY Advisors Tax and Business Consultants to provide assistance with compliance and reporting guidelines for the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Further, that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to execute said agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Further, all service costs shall be funded by ARPA funds. Even further, said engagement is contingent upon final approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester received fire escrow money in the amount of $34,595.65 for Robert and Joanne Blythe, 36 East 23rd Street, Chester, PA, 1913. And whereas Article 1509.02D provides for the return of funds after all necessary repairs, removal, or securing of the property has been completed and approved by the proper city official. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to issue payment of the fire escrow funds in the amount of $34,595.65 to Robert and Joanne Blythe for the repairs made to 36 East 23rd Street, Chester, PA, 1913.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated December 3, 2021, attached hereto and made apart hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yep, yes.
Bill Number 7, in ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending subsection 925.021 entitled fees of Article 925 entitled refuse collection of the codified ordinances of the City of Chester, 1978, as supplemented and amended to increase the fee listed in subparts A1 and A2 to $225, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass Bill Number 7 on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number 7 on its first reading.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment with a few of these ordinances. These are our annual ordinances that we have to approve before the end of the calendar year. There will and or may be some changes to some of these ordinances prior to its final reading at our next council meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill Number 8, in ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting the earned income tax for the year 2022, as set forth in Article 303 of the Codified Ordinance of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended in its entirety without substantial change except for an amendment to Section 303.02 entitled imposition of tax to impose a tax of 2% for 2022 for general revenue purposes on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by non-residents of the City of Chester for work done or services performed or rendered in the City of Chester, and to establish the earned income tax rate at 3.75% for 2022 on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by residents of the City of Chester, with 1% of the residents and non-residents earned income tax collections being designated to distress pension payments and providing for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance and imposing penalties for violation thereof.
I move that we pass Bill Number 8 on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number 8 on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill Number 9, in ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting without substantial change the business privilege tax for the year 2022, as set forth in Article 307 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Chester, 1978, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon persons, firms, companies, and corporations engaging in certain business within the City of Chester, except for the amendment to subsection 307.02A entitled rate and basis of tax of Section 307.02 entitled tax for general revenue purposes of said business privilege tax to set the said rate of tax to 2.0 mills for retail and 3.0 mills for wholesale, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass Bill Number 9 on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number 9 on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill Number 10, in ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Room Charter, reenacting without substantial change for the year 2022, the local services tax as set forth in Article 305 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon the privilege of engaging in occupation within the corporate limits of the City of Chester at the rate of $52 per year.
I move that we pass Bill Number 10 on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number 10 on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill Number 11, ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting a tax rate for the year 2022 on all real property at 9.4041 mills and fixing the library tax at .4017 mills.
I move that we pass Bill Number 11 on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number 11 on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill Number 12, in ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government herein after set forth during the 2022 calendar year.
I move that we pass Bill Number 12 on its first reading.
I'm reading it out.
Okay.
I have to read it out.
She gonna read it out the whole time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the one.
Okay. This is the one where you go on. Okay.
The Council, the Council of the City of Chester does ordain, Section 1, that for the expenditures and expenses of the 2022 calendar year, the following amounts are hereby appropriated from the fund equities, revenues, and other financing sources available for the 2022 calendar year for the specific purposes herein set forth. Section 2, the general fund budget for the 2022 calendar year is hereby set at $62,992.21 and appropriated from the following revenues as more fully detailed in the attached Exhibit A. Real estate taxes, $10,780,500. Taxes, Act 511, $19,61,000. Fines, $122,000. Licenses and permits, $1,526,500. Interest, rents, and royalties, $4,119,603. Intergovernmental revenues, $18,588,807. Charges for services, $7,408,811. Reimbursements, $1,383,000. And there's nothing for the other revenue totaling $62,992,221. Section 3, the general fund budget for the 2022 calendar year is hereby set at $63,956,500 and appropriated to the following departments as more fully detailed in the attached Exhibit A. Department of Public Affairs, $18,992,421. Department of Accounts and Finance, $21,623,117. Department of Public Safety, $7,254,650. Department of Public Streets and Highway, $4,329,260. Department of Public Works, $1,000,000. Department of Public Works, one million one hundred eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-five. Operating transfers, ten million six hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven totaling sixty-three million nine hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred. Section four, the State Liquid Fuels Tax Fund for the twenty twenty-two calendar year is hereby set at eight hundred thirty-nine thousand forty-eight dollars with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-two budget. Section five, the Special Revenue Fund for the twenty twenty-two calendar year is hereby set at fifty thousand with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-two budget. Section six, the Debt Service Fund for the twenty twenty-two calendar year is hereby set at eight million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-five with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-two budget. Section seven, the DCCC Fund for the twenty twenty-two calendar year is hereby set at four hundred eighty thousand with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-two budget. Section eight, the Capital Improvement Fund for the twenty twenty-two calendar year is hereby set at five hundred fifty thousand with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-two budget. And section nine, that any ordinances conflicting with this ordinance be and the same is hereby repealed insofar as the same affects this ordinance.
So move. I'm sorry, let me do this again. I move that we pass Bill number twelve on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill number twelve on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Just for clarity, Mr. Solicitor, Department of Public Works, can we make, just for clarity purposes, Department of Public Works forward slash Parks and Recreation?
No, Parks and Recreation slash Public Works.
Department of Public Works forward slash Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor, we're making Department of Public Works slash Parks and Recreation.
Forward slash Parks and Recreation.
I'm sorry, say it again. Oh, forward slash park, okay.
Inclusive. Any other comments?
Do we have to have that separately? Do we?
Question is, it's come up.
It's awfully confusing.
Can we just, can that remain Parks and Recreation?
As opposed to both?
As opposed to Department of Public Works?
Right.
We have, we have, there has already, there's clearly a division, Department of Public Streets and Highway is one department, and now we have Department of Public Works, which can be kind of confusing. I don't know, can we?
I mean.
Questions?
Currently, we have.
For Public Works.
Public Works. Do you want to create one?
No, no, I want to be inclusive. So if we can, well, let's, let's, right now, let's just go with Department of Public Works forward slash Parks and Recreation, we can work on it as we go.
Talk about it, Mike.
Yeah, we can work on it from there.
Because I think it should.
By the, by the executive order, it has it on there, all of these departments are on for, under, under the executive order, so they keep on trying to take out Department of Parks and Public Property and Recreation, and they can't do that. By law, all of these departments are on that executive list, so they can't, they can might say Department of Parks, Public Property and Recreation slash, but they cannot take out Parks, Public Property and Recreation, that's the law. And by the, by the third-class city code, that's the law. Just like all those other departments sits in there, that's the way Park, Public Property and Recreation is supposed to be.
This is the first reading, Councilmen, so therefore by being the first reading, we will be able to correct it as we go deeper, take a deeper dive into.
Final reading would dictate that perhaps we should just sit in executive session or something.
Yeah, because I think it should be, you know, spelled out, Parks, Recreation, and Public Property.
I think it might have been a misprint. Third-class city code.
It's, it is, is in the budget, and I, and I do believe Councilman is right, there may have been a misprint, or I talked to Ms. Janelle, Ms. Brown, about that, and I think she just probably forgot to replace it, so we'll correct it.
At the, delivered, didn't we?
Right, we'll correct it, we'll, we'll, we'll correct it. Any further conversation? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Right now, I'm staying.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
We have bid openings. It's for equipment rental contract for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. We have one bidder, and that would be Moore Construction Services Incorporated, one thirty-nine Schoolhouse Lane, Lynn Mills, P.A., one nine three four two. Bid forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars with a ten percent bid bond. That's the only one I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
I'd like to move that we accept the bid from Moore Construction Services Incorporated.
We're just accepting the bid.
Or that we accept.
The bid has been placed on the table, we usually will wait to hear back, although it's only one bid.
It's only one bid.
So we'll, we'll sit down in here, discuss with our engineer, and then.
Okay.
Move on.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
She moved, is he seconding?
No, second. No.
Yes.
You're not accepting it, you're just moving the bids that was ready, ready to go to the proper department for them to look at it.
We're not accepting it.
We're not accepting, you just, you just, you just, so moving the bids that was ready, that's it. And for it to go to the correct department to be.
But if you want to move it, you can move it as well, but you're not moving to adopt it.
Okay.
Okay.
So shall I correct that?
Yes, ma'am.
As a matter of record. Right. I'm, I'm, I move that we submit the information to our engineer, Mr. Mike Galanti, correcting what I.
And I, and I second that, that we move the bid received to the proper departments for review and consideration.
Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
We're now open up the microphones for public comments, if you have public comment, we ask that you go to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your public Microphone is stated, but it stands right over here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Diane McDaniel, I live thirty fifteen West Ninth.
I'm sorry, Diana.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Diana, can you try to talk into the mic, because I can't, I didn't hear you.
Diana McDaniel.
Much better, thank you, McDaniel.
Thirty fifteen West Ninth Street.
I'm sorry, thirty fifteen West Ninth Street, okay.
I'm here about a street light behind me, which is James Street, and it's, I've been calling all year, last year even it sounded to her, the light having been replaced, that's the first thing, and also Pulaski. Why wasn't the community notified of the groundbreaking or anything? Because I haven't heard anything. I had gotten a text Monday afternoon about groundbreaking, and a couple other neighbors I had spoke, didn't nobody know anything about it, and I wanted to know too, when Pulaski is being tore down, will they treat it for the rodents? Because I've been living at thirty fifteen for twenty-three years, and I haven't had a problem, and that's one of my concerns too, is the rodents.
Well, Ms. McDaniel, first of all, let me start with the, the lights, the lighting situation.
Mm-hmm.
We are going throughout the city systematically replacing all of our lights within the City of Chester. I don't know exactly where that area is on the list, our engineer is not here, but we are going to replace all the lights in the city. If you've driven down Ninth Street, I think we started with Ninth Street, and you'll see how much brighter that is. I think portions of Third Street, portions of Fifth, so we have a number of streets that we've already started, but we will get there, we're trying to brighten up the entire city. We have a, some money from the state, and our state representative has been so gracious as to help us receive these funds, this, this funding, so that we might be able to take care of all the lighting in the city.
Now, that's an alley, you know, and, I mean, it's dark, it's dark.
We're going to take our alleys too.
Okay. And also about Pulaski, I wanted to know about security, well, you know, you already said about the lighting, I'm, I'm assuming they're going to have it lit up around here.
You mean when they?
When they, yeah, when they build this rec center, it's, this rec center, that's what I was talking about, the groundbreaking of the rec center.
Okay.
Monday.
This, Mrs. Daniels is the lady that I told you, that resident that I told you I spoke to, and we're in the process of working with Chester Economic Development Authority, not Chester Economic Development Authority, but the Lisa Gaffney and the developers, we asked them on your behalf for a, a meeting.
Community.
With the community.
Yes.
So that's still being worked on, you know, we had a problem because we had asked Cornerstone, Cornerstone Ministries had offered their location to have the community meeting so that the community wouldn't have to travel that far to the meeting, and I think the last I heard, there was a problem with getting the sisters and the developers together on the same date, so we're still trying to work out a date for that community meeting. That's the last that I was told by Lisa Gaffney.
But, I mean, it must sound to like flyers, it must, I, you know, I have, would have no problem putting flyers in the doors of the neighbors to let them know, you know, what is going on, they could have attended the groundbreaking, I would have liked to have attended, but I didn't even know, and it's right in my backyard.
Well, Ms. Daniels, McDaniel, we apologize for not getting the word out soon enough, sooner to, to the residents, I'm, I think that both the developer and the city were so excited about the, the coming of a new facility here in the city, not only a new facility, recreational facility, but new, new housing developments in that area that we might have overlooked.
Don't forget us.
We'll never forget you, that's why we wanted it there, because we knew that it would improve the, the value of the housing that is already there.
Okay, now, Ninth and Booth, that is a terrible intersection. Now, my concern is with the center, whenever it's finished, the children running across the street to get to the center, we have had so many accidents, this summer, I wouldn't even sit on my porch too long because of the cars, almost accidents, accidents, we had somebody that was killed April, wish that it was late at night, but they were killed, I mean, they just fly up and down, they do not let nobody get across the street, you have to stop and peek behind cars in order to get across the street, because they be flying up and down Ninth Street, and I'm hoping to see a traffic light put up there, because, look, Lord only knows, I don't, do not want to see a child get killed trying to get to the rec center.
And, and neither do we, matter of fact, we don't want to see adults as well, because it's going to be a, a center that is open to both young and older persons. We will work with our city engineer as we do a traffic study to make sure that we know we have a recreational facility coming there, we know we have housing coming there to a field that was once abandoned, so we will do the proper studies to make sure that everyone is safe in that area. Unfortunately, I will say this, unfortunately, these folks are just driving crazy, and I'm just, I just had to be blunt.
I have even called the school district about a crossing guard, the school bus, what, I mean, have the red, the stop sign, they fly right on past, and sometimes the school bus will have to pull in the middle of the street to stop the traffic.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, my concern also is about the children.
Well, we hope, we, we, our goal is to make sure we make it as safe as possible for, for our kids and everyone else, to make sure that they have safe passage to and from the, not just the recreational center, but to, safe passage in that area.
And it's a state highway, a state highway, so we would have to also, the engineer will have to conduct that study through Penn Dot.
Well, I hope the engineer contact me too, so I can give my input, and, you know, it's, like I said, I've been there for twenty-three years, and I have really seen a lot that has changed.
Well, we hope this will be a change for the better.
Okay.
And yes, we will abate the building before we, before demolition takes full effect, we abate the building, will, we get everything, cross our fingers.
Yeah, because I've been seeing possums and.
They're actually in there doing that now, I think, like Galanti said, they'll be inside of the facility for about a few weeks before they even do the demolition process, doing the abatement, asbestos and things like that, so yeah.
Okay.
They're already working on it.
Okay, and Ms. West, it's always good to talk to you.
It's always nice talking to you too.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation, young lady?
Yes. Hello, everyone, Mayor, Councilman, and Council ladies. Uh, my name is Doris Evans, and I'm with the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance. And I have been doing the outreach, uh, since September for the counties of Philadelphia and the city of Philadelphia, Delaware and Chester, to outreach for Hurricane Ida. At the request of the governor, the state of Pennsylvania was declared eligible for federal disaster assistance, which brought in the SBA and FEMA, and I work for the SBA. And our program offers low-interest loans to homeowners, businesses, nonprofits, and renters. And to date, uh, SBA has approved, in the state of Pennsylvania, over forty million dollars for disaster, uh, in disaster assistance. We have taken thirty-six, three thousand six hundred and nine applications. We're at ninety-three percent in terms of getting those loans approved. December the tenth was supposed, was the second, um, it's been extended. The first extension was December the, well, excuse me, the initial deadline for physical loss, that's loss of machinery, equipment, um, personal property, was November the ninth. That was extended until December the tenth. So we just found out today that it's going to be extended again until January the tenth. So the fact sheets that I gave you, if you want these, um, where it says the physical deadline, if you would mark, cross that out and put January the tenth, I don't have an updated fact sheet yet because it just came down. And part of my outreach has been to, through media, attend meetings, just to get the message out to our, the stakeholders in the community that the disaster assistance is available. And, um, in your area, you may not have suffered any physical damage, um, which brings me to the economic injury law. And that is if businesses were forced to shut down because of maybe, as a result of businesses losing customers or services because of what was going on in other parts of the counties. And that deadline is January, is June the tenth, excuse me, that deadline is June the tenth, 2022, for, for economic loss. So businesses have, and nonprofits, they have quite a bit of time. It's the physical deadline that's time-sensitive. And one of the reasons is with physical losses visual, you can see it, you know that it's there. And a lot of times businesses and homeowners and renters, they'll wait on insurance. And what we say is don't wait on the insurance, if they do need SBA, is to go on and apply before the deadlines are. So, any questions? Um, in regards to, uh, SBA's program is for homeowners, businesses, renters, and nonprofit organizations. Municipities would fall under FEMA, you know, so. And my FEMA counterpart, uh, will probably make her way here eventually, so you're probably gonna meet her since we have more time. So part of the outreach is to try to visit as many, uh, attend as many of the meetings of, as, that we can, you know, to let you know that we're in the area that we have been working. And there were centers open, but as of Friday, they're going to be closed. So we're just going to be, a lot of the, um, applications can be submitted electronically. In fact, that's what the majority of them are being done. With COVID, everybody is just about to be virtual.
There you go, right?
Any questions?
Ms. Evans, thank you, and thank you for this information, we will definitely share this with.
Thank you very much, I will be sending emails and updates.
Okay.
So it's only been me, so we just, we haven't had, it's been trying to cover three counties in Philadelphia, it's been rough, you know, but it's been rewarding, you know, so. Thank you.
But you're located in, um, Atl- Atlanta?
Uh, my office is out of Atlanta, and I just happen to live in Atlanta, but some of my colleagues, we live all over the state, all over the United States. I just happen to live in Atlanta.
Okay.
Where our office is.
Okay.
Ma'am.
Um, what I would need to do is look at the, um, I get reports, you know, for the county, and it's, and, and that report with the county, it indicates how many home applications have been filed, how many, um, business applications for physical damage as well as economic, um, damage. So I can, that's usually available once a week, so I can, you know, get it to. Okay, and what I would suggest is, um, the centers are closing, um, that we had, uh, the one that was in your county had, had already closed. But if there is anyone that still needs to, uh, apply, is to get them to our customer service and get them to, um, you know, for assistance. Because my, I'm primarily public information, getting the word out, so, you know, if you put someone in contact with me, I need to get them to someone that can really assist them. Oh, sure, I have a couple of fact sheets with me. Uh, on the back of the fact sheets, um, it has the one eight hundred customer service number there. Okay, it's one eight hundred, six five nine, two nine five five.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, great. Thank you. Seeing no one else at the microphone.
Yes, Mayor. I want to make an.
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make an announcement about the rent assistant program. I'd like to say good evening to everyone. The rent assistant program is on its second phase, and the date that you can make your first call is, um, December the fifteenth. And what they're saying is that you call in, leave information, or call in and get an appointment. So you have to do the same thing that you did when you first applied for the first rental assistant. And, um, today, I, I received a call from a senior that was upset and crying because someone told her she was too old to get rent assistant. Now, this lady pays rent just like the young people. And I, I was really hurt because I don't understand why people are putting out , uh, information that's not true. It's open to anyone that's renting, any age, whatever. So, um, I'd like for everyone to know that needs this assistant, that they can call and apply. The same number that you use is the same number that you reapply. Thank you, and please come and take advantage of the funds that's out there. Thank you, and have a nice holiday.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else?
Okay, um, I'd just like to make an announcement about, um, there's been some question about leaves, who picks the leaves up, whether it's the regular trash vendor. I know, um, at one ti- they, the regular trash vendor, JP Mascara, they will pick up yard waste, which is like your, um, weeds or, you know, grass clippings and things like that. But as far as the we, um, leaves are concerned, um, you would call in just like you do for your bulk trash, and the Department of, um, Streets and Public Works, we will pick up your, um, leaves. And then if your community wants to schedule a time in a day where the guys will come out and, you know, you know, get the leaves up after you've blown it off of your property, because you do have to blow the leaves off of your property, and then we will get it from the street. So I just wanted to make that clear, that the regular trash vendor does not pick up the leaves. We do, and you can call in to us.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from members of council? Hearing and seeing none, we now declare this meeting adjourned. Have a great night.
So Will, you give me my packet.